This conference will now be recorded.
Call to order, the regular April 7th, 2025 council meeting to order at 6:31 PM. All right, applause and greetings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one mission, the very God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have none.
None, but I'd like to make a motion.
I'll move, the accepted agenda is written.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Council Weller, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carried. Moving right into the mayor's report, I don't have one at this time, tonight. Any presentations, Stephanie? Okay, counselor committee meeting reports. Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, the Public Works Committee met on the 25th. And didn't really have, kind of rehashed some of our rules. We are, like I said, we are, should be seeing that pedestrian improvement project plan moving towards us. Yeah, they're kind of scratching for new projects right now, so. So anyhow, that's, that was pretty much, oh. Well, she thought she was going to have the final cost for the spring board project, but she didn't at that time. And Sheila did show up at her workshop, they were interested in our street philosophy. Changes, underground application on State Avenue, kind of an update. And Bear Creek covert repair at Madison Avenue, that's. They're still kind of watching that, it'd be something. I don't know how we'd even fund that in the future. The wall's not moving, so we're not too worried, so. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Dale. Any other committee meeting reports? Okay. Moving right into topics on the floor, do we have any tonight? Nope. Okay, consent agenda for acceptance, Public Works Committee minutes for February 2025. Library Board meeting minutes for March 2025. Any questions or discussions?
I move to accept the consent agenda for acceptance.
So moved, second it? I'll second, seconded by Council Norman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda for approval, City Council meeting minutes for March 10th, 2025, and City Council meeting minutes for March 17th, 2025.
I move to accept the consent agenda for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Council Weller, Weller, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, motion carried, thank you. Any unfinished business tonight? Okay, moving right into new business, budget committee appointment, Gary Brown, applications on page seven. My lucky number. Any questions for, and I'm glad you're here tonight, Gary, and always like applicants that want to get our committee to be present when. This is an important thing we do here, so appointees to committees, so. Manager in the shop, Peterson Cat, that's, that's some work. You know, you know what budgets are and managing people, so I, I personally, after reviewing your application, I think you'd be an asset to the committee, so. Any other discussions or questions on this applicant?
How long have you been at Peterson Cat?
Almost seven years.
Okay.
I was at another cat dealer for 35, so.
Oh, you've got a little experience. Well, could I get a general consensus from the Renone City Council? On this applicant? Thumbs up?
Yep.
Be my honor with a general consensus from the Renone City Council to appoint you to the Budget Committee, thank you so much, and. Good job. We have a full committee now?
No, there's two more citizen positions available.
Open, two more, okay. Okay, new business B, open air market request, 2025, page eight and nine.
So what you have before you is an application for the open air market. Historically, this market has happened in that location or at Shep, Adams Avenue, it's passed for roughly 10 years, that I know of. They, historically, it was by an organization, I think it was Hands-on Art that was the nonprofit that was organizing it, and the proceeds would go to the art program at the school. It has since been taken, been taken over by another group, I'm not sure where those funds go. I do have some concerns. Historically, it was only on Saturdays, and again, so the city would give them the space for free, they would charge $5 for a vendor location, and that money would go, proceeds would go to the school for their art program. Now they want to do it on Friday and Saturdays, I don't know what their. Fee is going to be, I would venture to guess that they would again do the $5 for everybody to be there. My concern is, they want an additional day. Historically, it's only ever been on Saturdays, I don't know where the funding is going. My concern, I guess at the root, is that this is the loss in those vendor fees for the city, we would no longer get any funding, so they would, right now, people pay, or vendors pay $10 for, the $10 for their space on days that they're at that vendor lot. So now they would get that space for free for two days a week through the busiest time of the year. They're also expanding the time, historically, they would only be May through, I think Labor Day, now they want to do all of April through the very end of September. Again, I have concerns over it, I think it might be a way to escape for the vendors. I don't know that there's any benefit for the community, especially for. I mean, like, no benefit to the school, the community, it would be a benefit probably for the vendors who are there, and the organizer if they're collecting fees. I'm here to answer any more questions, give you my feel, so.
Can I just add something, just a correction, I think they always have done it through the end of September.
Okay.
It always runs right up to Sandman Festival.
It was May, right?
Yeah, I don't remember when it started, yeah, and I don't know that makes a big difference, but just to clarify.
So it'll be a month extra.
But have their dates, right?
Yes, I have the list.
Just through September.
Thank you.
Stephanie, are all previous vendors caught up on their fees?
No, I know they have been invoiced, but I hesitate to go any further than that.
Go ahead, Susan.
Questions, and I guess without having. Leanne here to answer, I think it's going to be hard to get answers. Are they planning on leaving the booths or vendors open in place from Friday to Saturday? So they're going to be there both, I mean, that's, that's of concern. I, I would like a little more information, you said, if this is, if we are donating it, what is the benefit to the city? I will say, it is of benefit to the community members because they have an opportunity to buy from people that they don't normally. I mean, if there's vegetables or fruit or, you know, plants and such like there have been in the past, that gives me an opportunity, or anybody an opportunity, to purchase. But the city is at risk, it is insured by the city, I don't know if we ever actually marked, painted off the corners of the elevated platform there. But we are not, this is not a no cost to the city, this is a potential hazard to the city if it is open Fridays and Saturdays to not a nonprofit. So, yeah, I love the idea of having a regular, you know, somebody running it and putting forward the open air market. I, they, it can be extraordinarily successful, but I just think we need, I need a little more information on this.
And just to touch on any vendor, it would make it easier for them if they showed up and there was a vendor there to take their fee, I'm sure it would be easier for them. Pay their fee and go set up, we don't restrict. I mean, they couldn't sell guns, but if anybody wants to sell vegetables, hot dogs, what have you, they are welcome to do that with a vendor agreement.
Follow-up question. So if, if the open air market gets this permit, can anybody else show up not participating with them at the same location?
Not that I'm aware of. Historically, that space is therefore reserved for that group, and they would pay that group for it. So all, all summer, if this agreement, as it stands, was approved, all summer, those two days, the city would reap no financial benefit for the space. Again, not that I'm against it, if it's for a good cause. For one day.
Go ahead, Dale.
So, yeah, I think, I wasn't on council when this first started, but probably wasn't around enough to hear that. The reason the city was not charging the Saturday market of vendor fees individually was because it was for a nonprofit. And then they self-imposed their own fees to help benefit the nonprofit in town, so. I think there's a real distinction here between a nonprofit and a for-profit enterprise that could then charge that vendor management fee to the other vendors, and they're all for profit. Plus, they could be, they would not be paying a vendor fee themselves because we're saying you get the space for free.
When in the past, examples.
That's two major issues, it's a policy issue, unfortunately, this council has not flushed out.
In, in the past, like in Spencer Park, when there's nonprofit or school groups that want to do a fundraiser, the city has not charged them. But if it's another organization who's doing it for gain, then they, they get charged that fee to reserve that space.
Go ahead, Dale.
I think we set that aside for an open air market, which would be a Saturday, Sunday event type thing, and now it's getting turned into. A, like a pocket park or something is what they're trying to do, you know, where they can sell food and stuff, it's not a nonprofit, so. I, I think we got something trying to happen here that we've never set down, made any rules for.
I'm, I agree with Stephanie, I, I just, there's not an, and Susan, there's just not enough information as to the Friday added to that, and. The people that are already participating are not caught up in their fees, in fact, I think they're quite, quite a big amount of money in the rares.
Would you like me to invite them to come to a meeting, or would you like me to ask them specific questions, and in the meantime, any vendors that are there will continue to incur costs?
I think both. Yeah.
What questions do you have for me to get ahead of time?
I have a question, do these vendors, do, do they have to have a food handler's license?
Yes, they have to, so any that have food have to be cleared through Columbia County Public Health. I believe there's been times where some of the vendors have, so like fruits and vegetables, farmers' market stands, I don't believe they have to, so also not selling eggs, I think eggs and raw milk are one of the things that are restricted in that regard. But any that are selling ready-to-eat meals, they have to have that, so Holy Smoker, Chop Chop, the grilled cheese one that they have, those all have Columbia, either Columbia County Public Health or other county public health clearances.
Mayor, just a couple of things to think about, too, from the same aspect of it is your law enforcement, that's going to be at service for them, to have to provide protection for their structures in the round. The other thing is, depending on what kind of food processing they use, far as cooking, you're talking about fire issues, fire safety issues as well, so that's just two things to think about.
I don't know if I know Leanne.
She, she has a vendor booth down there as well, and she's in some sort of relation to the Holy Smoker family, so. Would you like me to reach out and invite them to come to the next council meeting?
If they want to come in the form of a presentation, that'd be great. Yeah?
I'll offer more time.
Council agreed?
Yeah.
We could think about it some more, Dale, what do you think?
I'm still, we're going to have to bat around, you know, the nonprofit versus the profit situation, that's, it's going to be the stickler, them coming, giving a presentation to us, it's just going to put you under gun. I mean, do you have a thought on that, Susan, how we get around that, I mean, makes it fair?
Yeah, so, this is going to be, I don't think, any different than when this was presented originally by David and Richard, who wanted to put their truck there and then also make it a food cart place. There, actually, there probably is documentation as far as cost to, to rent or lease the area for that period of time, I mean, that, it was a, basically, this period of time that they wanted to take over that area for the food cart. There was discussion about putting an electrical, I mean, there, there was a lot that went into those discussions at that time, so, I think. I don't think it's going to be difficult, we already have in place some willingness to have that kind of an engagement with a public entity. Again, she, she may have this as her plan is to basically run it the way it was, I don't know, because we don't have any information. It may be that she plans on donating half the fees to the city, or whatever it is, until we hear from them, and I don't think a presentation is inappropriate. I think until we hear from them, though, that we can't really act on this.
So what I'm hearing is, if it's, it'd be two different ballgames, nonprofit could be approved because it's for a nonprofit, and it goes towards a community cause, if it's not associated with a nonprofit, then there's a fee associated, and it's treated as though it was any other day.
And, and maybe we can pull those old proposals if they're easily accessible?
They're all roughly the same, but they go through Hands-on Art.
No, I meant the for-profit.
Oh, oh, yes.
The agreements that we.
Yes, sorry.
About, yeah.
I think we actually use those vendor agreements now, so they have to sign one to be down there, and then there's various different agreements with different vendors.
Thank you.
Can you clarify the fee on, on that again?
It's $10 per day.
Per day?
Per vendor, yeah.
And so, as it is now, it's just Saturday, correct? And they're asking in addition to go to Friday and Saturday?
So, two different things, historically, open air market was only on Saturdays, they did not pay the city anything, it was because it was a community benefit, they got it for free, vendors paid them $5, and that money went towards the Hands-on Art program. Any day of the week, now, outside of that, a vendor can go down there, pay their $10, like Chop Chop sends their check in, pays for their space, gets it put on the calendar, and they're there. So anybody can go down there, you know, sign the, our agreement and set up anytime.
Okay, thanks. I think Joe Shirley was trying to set up.
Yes.
Right where we're talking about, and remember that, Susan?
We couldn't provide the electricity.
Yep.
Yeah, which is another thing, how are we ever going to be able to afford the electricity if we're not getting any?
Exactly. So, so, could I request to staff bring us back what the vendor fees have been bringing in down there?
For the last fiscal year?
Last fiscal year, yes, because, you know, the outstanding question is, that is our designated vendor space, and there's been multiple requests to get electricity put in down there. Every time we see the price for that, we're like, whoa, we don't operate for free. So eventually, I would think, with these vendors, over time, that we might accumulate enough funds there, I know we're not, but I would be against pulling that money back to put in infrastructure, and I think it's one way of thinking about this. It makes kind of an awkward situation, I mean, the Friday, Saturday, and then, you know, Chop Chop comes in, and they come right in here and pay, and go down there and set up, and now they just go, oh, well, it's Saturday market, we'll go down there and pay them five bucks instead, and.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're going to have to really flush this out, but, yeah, let's hear the proposal a little more in depth.
Okay, everyone good with that? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Visits from the departments. Ordinances and resolutions. Correspondence, save the date, City County Dinner, page 10, St. Helen's. 29th of April. More information to come, but just to be aware of that, that evening.
We actually sent the email out already, Stephanie, did you get that?
I did, but I don't remember when the RSVP date was, so I was going to ask you guys to keep an eye out for your email in case the RSVP date is ahead of the next council meeting. They'll need to know if you're planning to attend or not for the head count. So it's at the newly remodeled John Gumm Building, so.
Yeah, so.
So please keep an eye out unless Susan's able to quickly find it.
Oh, actually, I think I put it on my calendar, you know, imagine that.
I, I haven't seen it in my email yet.
Yeah.
Didn't came in. Oh, it just came in today?
No, it came a few days ago.
Have the RSVP, RSVP?
I don't think so.
It did, she, it added the new date, and I didn't, did not write that down.
I'll send it to you guys, that way.
But it is, it's the 29th, it's six.
No, I won't be there.
Broccoli, broccoli and sweet and sour or something. The St. Helen's catering, student catering.
From the high school.
From the high school is going to be doing the food.
Okay, good. Well, I'm planning on attending, so, you know, Stephanie's. So. Doesn't look like we have our city administrator tonight for a report.
He's still ill.
Boy, hope she gets better soon.
But she could use the rest.
Okay, items from the mayor and councils, well. Memorial Day is coming up here in another, another month or two, and so. I have a good friend that was in the Portland Air Guard years ago, so I called him up and, and I said, Cliff, could you. Get me a contact for the Portland Guard for a possible flyover for our Memorial Day service on the 26th of, of May, up at the cemetery at 11:00 PM, or 11:00 AM. So he gave me a phone number, so I called on guard and got a really nice sergeant. And anybody, to make a long story short, she sent an application to me and Josette, and we both filled it out, and we were approved from the FAA, with the FAA. And we became eligible for that event, now, we won't know until about a week before Memorial Day, but if they want, can include us in their flight pattern on that day. There's going to be three or four blue angels flying over our cemetery at 1,000 feet, so I'm really excited about it, so, keep you posted, so. And the American Legion have agreed to, to put on the ceremony that day, it starts at 11 o'clock, so. I think that'd be awesome, so. That's about all I have. Any reports from the council?
Just quick, obviously, I'm here, did not yet make it to Colorado, we, my father-in-law had a bit of an issue, so, he's okay, but we just delayed it a month, so I will be going to the City, League of Oregon Cities Conference on the 30th of April, and then heading out from there, so. I, in May, I will be remote. For when we actually go, so.
Thank you, Susan. Dale?
Yeah, probably all where we did some more work on the old docks. It looks like our plan wasn't totally successful on the one, and it floated back up, the porch floated up. We didn't get the rock shoved in under good enough, and I don't know, so, it's not a dangerous situation, and they still have a pile, a little bit of a pile of rock in the parking lot, I didn't get to talk to Jeff, but I talked to Chris. And they might be able to sneak their dump truck in there, dump it in there, fill up the hole a little more, and we can, I was down there pitching rocks. I was down there pitching rocks by hand. Try to make it for people that can get a lay through the hole, but.
That the one straight across?
Yeah, yeah.
The other one looks, yeah, I walked by.
Looks good, but I looked at it today and I see the ground right there. Kind of got a crack in it and I see a little hole.
The one on the east side?
Yeah. Or the campground, so. I was hoping they weren't going to try to do that. We're almost full. Three and a half. Three and a half inches or so to go. So I told, talked to Josette about lining up the cable, which, what they're being out. Thinking, not this week, but next week, have the possibility if we get the cable and everything, we'll be ready to anchor those docks because the, the new docks. Because that one on the west side, it's ramped all the way over into the railing. On one side, it's just all whopper jawed. I put two ratchet straps on that one and they both just disappeared. The one disappeared overnight. The one over on the east side where the camp hosts can see, they've been leaving alone, but that other one. Hopefully, get there and get, get them squared up and get them in there the way they need to be anchored where people can't tamper with stuff. Boy, there's sure a lot of fishing hooks in that mill tape off the temporary anchors. Be careful you're pulling on that rope. And that'll be a goldmine pulling that up. And we've been getting, I did talk to Angie. It's really hard to tell where you're at on the parking fees. I know early on there in March, the compliance rate wasn't real great. I walk, you know, I walk down the line of cars and see a lot of red tags. Our guys are doing their job of putting the tags on. You don't know how many of those convert. You know, do they pay the fee before leaving or not? But what you do see over time with them tagging is as I've been walking through there, the compliance rate's been getting better and better and better. So, and there's been a lot of traffic down there these last weekends with nice weather and even weekdays when the weather's nice. The fish being in, there's now over 4,000, over 4,000 fish have been dumped. So I don't know, we were looking, Angie and I were looking. It's really hard to tell because we were only at 11 grand, I think, when we looked the other day.
Have a couple less.
And, but she says this time of year is when we really, and we looked for March, we brought in over $3,000 just in March alone, so, on parking fees. But it's important for our parks that we collect that because, you know. But I figured it up, we're around 30 bucks a day to run the pump.
Right now's the time that people are buying their annual passes also.
Yeah.
That's $50 a pop.
Yeah. They didn't have them for a while there and they were having people, you know, sometimes it's on a weekend, but they have them now. And they've been selling a few.
How many days does it take to get three and a half inches?
Oh, we're going, well, depends on the rain. Made a big jump here with this rain we just had. But I go about a half inch a day.
Oh, really?
And slows down as you get up toward the top.
We must have got an inch of rain at about 12:30 today and 10 minutes.
Yeah.
So once it's full, then they, they cut it off, right? Or, or?
No, then you kind of go into maintenance mode. You know, you run one pump, two pumps, just try to kind of, you know, sometimes in that range and you're a little over falls. I try, it's, always try to keep one pump running because it's a real pain in the rear to, if you, if the foot nails don't hold, we, if you go three or four days without pumping, you're lucky if you can get started up. And then I got to drag all the hose out, electrical cords, a pump in the lake.
Oh, boy.
And fill and bleed it. So I always try to just try to keep one running. Usually we'll lose ground with one running and let it come down a few inches and then turn maybe all the pumps back on or whatever. It's not hard to prime up off it if you have one pump running. You can loop over and prime the other pump pretty easy. So yeah, we spent quite a bit of money. I forget the number. Angie, we were, last winter we were talking, looking at the electrical bill. It's significant, you know, 30 bucks a day. Of course, yeah.
Are they on their own meter? The pumps, are they on their own meter?
It's, it's a demand.
Except for the lights along the back are on them. But the lights, when they're on in the winter time, no pumping, it's, well, your base fee is your biggest charge. It's like 17 bucks or something.
It's a demand meter too, isn't it, Dale? It's a demand meter. It's three days.
It's three days.
That's the demand. You're in a little different bracket there too.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Little lower rate than a residential rate. But still. Okay. Thank you, Dale. Anybody else? So we do have maybe an action item summary with the.
I'm going to bring more information from the vendors.
Okay.
On the vendors.
So the next council meeting will be April
21st.
17th?
21st?
Yeah, I think so.
No, it should be 21st.
21st, I'm sorry, 21st, so. No other workshops, I don't think.
This time.
Keep track of your emails as far as budget meeting dates. They've been changed again.
There was conflict.
So that's not until May. Anyway, the next council meeting will be April 21st at 6:30. No other thing, I'll adjourn the meeting at 7:08 PM, meeting adjourned.